Morning. When we get started, members will take their seats. And if any visitors ask that you please retire behind the rails. Just before we get started, I'd ask if anyone has a cellphone or any other electronic device that makes any noise, please turn it off or turn it on airplane mode or vibration. Appreciate your cooperation. To give our invitation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Brian Grant of Germantown Christian Assembly Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Bass. I would ask all guests, visitors, and members to please rise. Morning.
I want to, it's a pleasure for me to be here this morning, and I want to thank President Clark and each council member for the invitation, and especially to Councilwoman Bass, to who extended the invitation on your behalf. Let me just say one thing before I give you a brief prayer. I'm not going to be long-winded, but you know, a man was walking on the beach one morning, and as he walked on the beach, he noticed that every time the tide came in, it left hundreds of starfish on the beach. He decided he's going to do something. So he picked up one of the starfish and he threw it back into the water because the starfish were laying in the sun dying. And one by one, he started throwing more starfish back into the water. A man passed by him and he said, "What are you doing?" He said, "I'm saving the starfish." The man said, "There's hundreds of starfish out here. The few that you are saving really isn't making any difference. You're really not making any impact." The man didn't say anything. He picked up one more starfish. He threw it into the water. He said, "It sure made a difference to that one." And you know, sometimes I'm sure in the work you do, sometimes you might become discouraged. You're trying to save the city. And sometimes you're discouraged that all that you hoped to see happen has not happened. But might God encourage you that every life you touch, every life you have impacted, you have sure made a difference to that starfish. And so I just want to let you know that you are making a difference. And may God bless you as you continue to serve our city. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today with a heavy heart. For despite the efforts of this council, despite the efforts of so many officials in our land, our nation is filled with division and violence. Lord, in this time of challenge, keep us reminded of the words of Solomon, that righteousness makes a nation great, but that sin will destroy any people. We therefore pray that you will turn the hearts of our nation towards you and that you will give us a desire to seek after righteousness. And Lord, in this age of rage, may each of us pursue peace, as our master said, "Lord, help us to even love our enemies." May we be challenged by the words of St. Francis of Assisi when he said, "Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me so love; where there is injury, pardon; where there is doubt, faith; where there is despair, hope; where there is darkness, light; where there is sadness, joy." Oh, Grant, that we may not seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to be understood, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive; it is in pardoning that we are pardoned; it is in dying that we are born again to eternal life. Heavenly Father, I ask that you bless each member of this city council in a special way, meet their needs as only you can, do them with wisdom, and guide them to discern your will. We pray in the name of Christ our Savior. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor, for those inspiring words. Councilor, please. Thank you. And again, thank you, Pastor, for those inspiring words. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal, the meeting Thursday, February 13, 2020, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal for the meeting of Thursday, February 13, 2020, be approved.
Thank you. It had been moved improperly. Second, that the Journal of the meeting of Thursday, February 13, 2020, stand approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes haven't, and that Journal is approved. Our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentle lady. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come to witness their government in action. We hope your stay here today is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you so much for being here. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who will present a resolution recognizing living legends. With Judge Frederica Messiah Jackson and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. While I recognize this woman here, I just wanted to note for the record that if you look to my right, you will see that there are a bunch of ladies in pink and green sitting here. These are the ladies of the Omega Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. They are here to support their sorority and our history-making Judge Frederica Messiah Jackson, and they will also, Councilman Johnson, be seen for the special hearing of this afternoon on gun violence because it's an issue that they've worked on.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you so much, ladies, for being here today. Thank you for your service. Joining the Councilmen, we have Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson, Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Gauthier, and Councilman Johnson. And I see...
Are we almost there?
Councilman, Councilman, hold on one second. One second. Hey, how you doing? Councilman, before we start, I just want to like the chance to recognize a very special person to all of us. Councilwoman Blackwell, you didn't think you were going to sneak in here without being noticed. Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, how you doing? Thank you. Proceed, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. History is not the story if only others tell it. It is his story. The living legends' recognition is made because sometimes people are so busy making history that they don't take the time to look up and smell the roses and see the accomplishments and things that they have done. What we want to do is recognize those individuals annually that are really making a difference. A life is only measured by the impact it has on other lives, said Jackie Robinson. And that's a true statement then, it's a true statement now, and the living legends that we're going to recognize today live by that. Doesn't matter their field of endeavor, whether it is in education, whether it is in music, whether it is in the halls of justice in City Hall, they are making a difference in other people's lives every single day. Give them a round of applause. So today, we are going to recognize Georgio Kohaloon. I always just call him Georgio. Dr. Naomi Johnson Booker, the Honorable Frederica Messiah Jackson in the halls of City Justice. Give her a round of applause, too. As well as our own Lynette Brown Sewell and Constance Clayton Powell. All of these individuals who are living legends have made a difference in the lives of others and are continuing to do that. So therefore...
She's over here.
Where she at?
Right here.
No, no, it's Cindy. It's Parker first. Let's go. Here we go. I had to spread it out.
And whereas Lynette Brown Sewell, point of personal privilege, Lady of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated Philadelphia Alumni Chapter, with that being said, Lynette Brown Sewell is a well-known leader in the education and behavioral health communities in Philadelphia. In her role as the Vice President of Marketing and Government Relations with the Community College of Philadelphia, Ms. Brown Sewell worked diligently at both local and national levels to ensure education for all. She worked with the American Association of Community Colleges as well as the White House to support tuition-free programs at community colleges and maintenance of funding for federal Pell Grants. Ms. Brown Sewell also served as the Chair of the Board of Directors for the Consortium, a behavioral health care organization that pioneered the strategy of balancing the input of community leaders and medical experts to expand access to patient-centered behavioral health care models into individual neighborhoods. After 22 years with Community College of Philadelphia, Ms. Brown Sewell returned to her path of entrepreneurship as manager of L.M. Brown Management Group, a consultant firm she founded in 1980 that provides a range of professional services. And...
As the son of a retired Philadelphia schoolteacher and as a parent of a son who's only been educated in the school district of Philadelphia, it gives me great pride and joy to read the next honoree. Whereas Dr. Constance Clayton has been recognized on numerous occasions for her contribution to Philadelphia's education system. She began her career in 1955 as an elementary school teacher for the School District of Philadelphia at the former William H. Harrison School. In 1973, she became the first Director and then Associate Superintendent of the Early Childhood Program for the School District. In 1982, she was the first African-American person to serve as the Superintendent of the School District of Philadelphia. Her work as Superintendent was characterized by her reputation for tackling the district's most difficult budgetary crises without cutting, without cutting student services, and for partnering with the businesses to procure resources and center the community around education. Dr. Clayton has been awarded numerous honors for her service to the education system, including becoming the first African-American woman to have a professorship named for her at an Ivy League institution, University of Pennsylvania, which established the Constance E. Clayton Professorship in Urban Education in 1992. And...
Before I read the passage about Greg Pak Kohaloon, I just want to say that I've had the benefit of knowing Mr. Greg for many years. He's a changemaker and a leader in the 3rd District, and we've all been made better by his efforts. Whereas, Gregorio Pak Kohaloon has served his community for over 30 years, first as a block captain for the 500 block of Osage Avenue, and then as President of the Friends of Malcolm X Organization. As the President of the organization since 1997, Mr. Kohaloon spearheaded the transformation of Malcolm X Park, formerly Black Oak Park. Mr. Kohaloon has worked tirelessly to make the park a point of pride for the community through initiatives like the Annual Jazz Heritage Series, where the park hosts free concerts featuring local jazz artists on evenings throughout the summer, as well as the bi-annual Love Your Park Day. He was also awarded the Annual Governor's Award for Outstanding Citizen in Crime Prevention for his stewardship of the park. Mr. Kohaloon continues to serve as a community anchor in West Philadelphia as well as the city at large. And...
And I'd also like to take a point of personal privilege to thank Councilmember Jones for allowing me to read the whereas clause in honor of the daughter of my esteemed triumphant sorority of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Audrey Johnson Thornton, who's President Emeritus of Belmont Mansion, and we thank her for her service and we miss her. Whereas, Dr. Naomi Johnson Booker is the Founder and Chief Executive Officer of the Global Leadership Academy Charter School and has worked for more than 40 years in the field of public education. Dr. Naomi Johnson Booker started her career in education as a teacher with the School District of Philadelphia. She then went on to become a principal and area superintendent before retiring from the district in 2004. Dr. Johnson Booker went on to become the Regional Vice President of the Keystone Alliance for Public Charter Schools, where she served until she formed the Global Leadership Academy in 2007. Dr. Johnson Booker has received numerous awards and honors for her work in education, including N. by the White House Initiative for Education Excellence in 2014, as well as Philadelphia Martin Luther King Junior Association for Nonviolence Salute to Greatness Education Award in 2015. And...
And whereas, the Honorable Frederica A. Messiah Jackson is a remarkable and accomplished jurist who has spent her career serving the people of Philadelphia in numerous ways. Judge Messiah Jackson obtained her Juris Doctor degree from the University of Pennsylvania at only 23 years old and went on to clerk for Justice Robert N.C. Nix on the Pennsylvania Supreme Court from 1974 until 1976. In 1983, she was elected to the Philadelphia Court of Common Please after working for seven years at the Philadelphia firm Blank Rome. From 2001 to 2006, she sat as the President Judge of the Court of Common Please, and in addition to her judicial service, Judge Messiah Jackson has also served as an educator, teaching legal studies and business law at the Wharton School of the University of Pennsylvania. And now, therefore...
And just taking a moment of personal privilege, I just want to acknowledge some individuals who helped me become the person who I am today. I remember when I first wanted to run for public office, I remember sitting down and talking to the Honorable Frederica Messiah Jackson, and I want to just personally thank you for your words of encouragement. And I remember as a young man, attending Charles Elementary School in Barrett Junior High School, and that was under the leadership of Constance Clayton. And I remember when we were growing up, the teachers would show up at your house when you weren't behaving because they cared. I remember if there was a snowstorm, you were still coming to school to learn, and that was under the leadership and caring compassion of Constance Clayton, one of the best superintendents in the history of Philadelphia. And I, and most of you may or may not know, under the leadership of my former, I like to say, the late, great Hardy Williams and his political organization, I had a mentor who was the field general, who taught me the art of political organizing in a field. And if you ever see me out on the street and wonder why I'm always going door-to-door and talking to the neighbors, it was under her leadership, and she was the enforcer to make sure that I had my ward book together, make sure I knew my committee people, my block captains, and most importantly, made sure I knew the people. And as a result, I am 5-0 as it relates to elections in terms of me being a state representative and the first African-American representative representing the 2nd District and City Council, and that's my mentor, Lynette Brown Sewell. And so I just want to take a moment to acknowledge them for their dedication to help me become the person who I am today, and I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Dr. Naomi Johnson Booker for just her hard work and dedication to make sure all young people, all young people receive a quality education regardless of their neighborhood and/or their zip code. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia, that we hereby honor and celebrate Philadelphia's living legends, Lynette Brown Sewell, Dr. Constance Clayton, also, I call him Mr. Greg because he runs Malcolm X Park, he's always out there on the ground making sure that the people in that part of West Philadelphia are supported, Dr. Naomi Johnson Booker, and the Honorable, Honorable Frederica Messiah Jackson, who are leaders in Philadelphia in their respective fields of behavioral health, education, art, music, and the justice system, as part of the Commemoration of Black History Month. Further resolved, that an enclosed copy of this resolution be presented to these living legends as further evidence of the sincere respect of this legislative body, and we say congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes the Honorable Frederica Messiah Jackson. For remarks.
Well, good morning, Council President Darrell Clark, Councilman Curtis Jones, and to all the council members who introduced this resolution, to all those who sponsored this resolution, and to all those who supported this amazing resolution. We hope it was unanimous. I extend, on behalf of all five living legends of the year 2020, I extend our sincere thanks and appreciation on behalf of Lynette Brown Sewell, Dr. Constance Clayton, Mr. Gregory, Dr. Naomi Johnson Booker, and myself. We are so proud and delighted to be here this morning, surrounded by family and so many friends in this city council chambers, and a special shout-out to all the pink and green friends who are here today. We are here today to celebrate Black History Month and to acknowledge our Philadelphia communities. This city council has demonstrated leadership under the auspices of President Clark, and we applaud you. Each of us, as living legends, work in the communities of Philadelphia in education or in the arts or music or the courts or a combination of these. We believe in this city. We believe in the people of Philadelphia all 12 months of the year. And again, thank you on behalf of all of us. Thank you.
Councilor, please.
And whereas, in 1973, Reverend Robert H. Paul was first employed with the Sheet Metal Workers Union Local Nineteen. Within four years, Reverend Robert H. Paul received the Apprentice of the Year Award and was awarded a two-year scholarship to sketching school and...
Whereas with the help of former presidents, Mr. Tom Kelly, Mr. Joe Sellers, and current President, Mr. Gary Messina, Reverend Robert H. Paul has led the Piney Grove Tutorial Program. And whereas, a Piney Grove Tutorial Program is a 12-week training program that prepares its students to take the ASFAB Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Test, after passing this test, an interview is granted them, an opportunity to extend to that student an apprenticeship into the union and...
Whereas, the Piney Grove Baptist Church Tutorial Program is open to all men and women regardless of ethnic background or education levels or having had past incarcerations. And whereas, the Piney Grove Baptist Church Tutorial Program, success over the years has been 60% minority and 20% female acceptance into the apprentice program and...
And whereas, the Piney Grove Baptist Church Tutorial Program and the leadership of President, Mr. Gary Messina, the Sheet Metal Workers Union Local Nineteen, and are the second-best, I can't recount, second-best minority participation union in Philadelphia and...
Whereas, Reverend Robert Paul and the Sheet Metal Workers Union Local Nineteen have continued to give back to the Logan community, including homeless, seniors, sick and shut-in, Logan Elementary School, Piney Grove Daycare, the 35th Police District, and firefighters from Ogonson Champlos Avenue, the Firehouse by sponsoring the annual Thanksgiving Dinner and Christmas Baskets and...
Whereas, for the past five years Reverend Robert H. Paul and the Sheet Metal Workers Union Local Nineteen have contributed backpacks filled with school supplies to the Logan Elementary School, Piney Grove Daycare, school students, children of the church and neighborhoods and...
Whereas, to recognize the Reverend Robert H. Paul's contribution to the union, the Sheet Metal Workers Union Local Nineteen elected him a trustee in 2000 and in 2005 was elected to the Executive Board. He has worked as a part-time recruitment officer and now a full-time recruitment officer. This afforded him the opportunity to participate in job fairs in public and parochial schools, churches, community centers, and penal systems in Philadelphia and surrounding the tri-state areas, as well as establishing a satellite program and...
And having almost 30 years in the building trades myself, I bore witness of Reverend doing all the work of the good angels in the community with sheet metals, leadership going back a few terms, and most recently with Gary Messina, whom I grew up in the business with, where everybody, in the eyes of Reverend Paul, is a starship, is a starship, uh... Starfish, I ruined it. Everybody is a starfish, right? Because he truly gives back and has an impact, not just on the sheet metal workers of building trades, but the communities that he serves. So whereas, after 46 years of being a part of Sheet Metal Union Local Nineteen, the passion and the commitment continues within now and will in the future. Therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Philadelphia that hereby recognizes and honors Reverend Robert H. Paul and the Sheet Metal Workers Local Nineteen for over 15 years of commitment and dedication to Piney Grove Baptist Church Tutorial Program and their commitment to the surrounding communities and the tri-state area.
And I just wanted to say again, just to reiterate, you know, that Pastor Paul has been a direct link to the African-American community into the building trades, into the Sheet Metal Workers Union. And I thank him so much because there is so much of a need in our communities for these sorts of opportunities. And we also want to thank the Sheet Metal Workers Union for being so open and so much a part of what we do. And thank you so much, Gary, for all of the work that you do, because we want to make sure that you recognize, we beat up on you pretty bad, you know, when folks don't recognize the importance and need of inclusion and the diversity in the building trades. And when somebody gets it right, we want to recognize them. So thank you so much for getting it right. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, the Chair recognizes the Reverend Paul for remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, sir.
We give honor and glory to our Lord and Savior, Jesus of Christ, and certainly we thankful to God for all that has transpired today. I'm honored to be here. We certainly thankful to God for all of the councilmatic members, especially our dear sister, Sister Bass. We thankful to God for our President, Brother Gary Messina, and all those members that are standing here with me that make up the Sheet Metal Workers Union Local Nineteen. I'm honored to be here, representing the members and the people of our dear city. We recognize that we are all part of the village, that it's all part of us. We're all in this together. No one man can make a difference, no one man or one person can make a difference, but together we stand united, we can make a difference in our country, in our city, and in the lives of everyday people. I'm honored, thank you, thank you, thank you, one and all, for what you've done. You don't have to recognize nobody at all, but I'm so grateful to God. I must give honor also to my church, Piney Grove Baptist Church, and the family that makes up the church. But I am indeed grateful also to have my bride of 52 years. She's here with me. And thankful to God for her loyalty, because many hours that I'm away, she's there by herself, per se. Holding it down. Thank you. But then, I'm also grateful to a dear brother by the name of Gary Messina. Right now, it's just an honor to have him here, because he has death in his family. And Gary, I'm honored to have you here, brother. I think anybody need to be here as well, along with me. Garrett, you need to come and say something as well, man. I love you dearly, brother. Because you're just that kind of a man.
It's an honor to be here today. If you know Reverend Bobby Paul like I do or we do here, the man is just a man of love. He gives everything he's got. He changes people's lives every day. I mean, he takes inner-city kids and gives them hope, and gives them an opportunity with sustainable wages and benefits, things they don't feel they are entitled to or have opportunities to get. And partner, Oak Nineteen partnered with Bobby Paul many years ago, and, you know, like Bobby, we want to give back as much as we can to this community. And I am proud to stand here today with Reverend Bobby Paul, my union officials, and some of the people that Bobby Paul helped are here today, some women and some gentlemen who can actually attest to the fact that if it wasn't for Bobby, they wouldn't be standing here today. So... Bobby is truly the gentleman of all gentlemen, and I am proud to say he's my friend and my brother. Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilmen Beattie. Our next order of business is communications. And the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the Mayor to the Chief Clerk. And Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, an ordinance submitting Chapter 9, 800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant, to clarify and amend applicable procedures pertaining to the Fair Housing Commission and to provide for the adoption of regulations, all under certain terms and conditions.
Mr. Decker, have any additional communication?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one bill on your behalf and two privileged resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance authorizing Altera Properties to construct, own, and maintain a proposed exterior building ramp and steps at 1401 through 15 Arch Street.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on the Environment and the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities to hold hearings to examine the impact of the sale of the Philadelphia Energy Solutions.
In today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing February as Career and Technical Education Awareness Month in Philadelphia.
Today's calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have a Council President, I have one bill on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance submitting Chapter 9, 800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant, to clarify and amend applicable procedures pertaining to the Fair Housing Commission and to provide for the adoption of regulations.
Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I offer one resolution today, co-sponsored by you, yourself, Council President, and other members of council.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the winningest coach in Philadelphia basketball history, William Speedy Morris, on the occasion of his retirement.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer two bills, one privileged resolution on my behalf and one privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 14, 203 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Definitions by adding a definition for site clearing, further amending Section 14, 704 entitled Open Space and Natural Resources by making technical changes to regulations regarding development on steep poles.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Main Street, Ridge Avenue, West Haken Creek, the Skoko River, and Osborne Street.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Phoebe A. Haddon for her appointment as Chairwoman of the Board of Directors of the Federal Reserve Bank of Philadelphia.
And that will be on today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Public Safety and Committee on Education to hold hearings to examine the problem of gun violence occurring near Philadelphia schools, and to consider enhancing and establishing video surveillance cameras near schools as school safe corridor zones for students, school personnel, and residents.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing victim-witness services of South Philadelphia for 30 years of service to victims of violent crime in South Philadelphia.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Chris Kirchner on the occasion of her retirement as Executive Director at the Philadelphia Children's Alliance.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution declaring March 1 through 7, 2020 as Women in Construction Week in the City of Philadelphia.
Also on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Harold T. Epps on the occasion of his departure as Director of Commerce for the City of Philadelphia for his decades of service to Greater Philadelphia's business community.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the Police Athletic League of Philadelphia and welcoming the 50th Annual PAL Day at City Hall.
And that will also be in today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions, but I would like to be recognized to speak.
Absolutely, Councilwoman. Please do now, yeah.
Yes, today's students from Paul Robeson High School are sitting in our City Council session, and I would like to ask these students to stand with their teachers to be recognized. These students have been learning about council for the past few days, and in their social science classes, and with their teacher, Hanako France, after the session is over, I will be answering their questions here in council chambers. I'd like to invite any of my fellow council members who are free after session to stay and speak with the young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and welcome, welcome. Thank you for coming today. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
Thank you, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Good morning. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 12, 701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize a buffered bicycle lane on Spruce Street from Second Street to 22nd Street and on Pine Street from Front Street to 18th Street.
And that will be on today's calendar. Oh, that's an ordinance. That will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming East Passianke Avenue between South Street and Bainbridge Street as Avenue of the Roots.
Thank you. That will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance establishing no truck parking regulations on Bellfield Avenue between North 20th Street and Worcester Street and Ogonson Avenue between West Somerville Avenue and Lindley Avenue.
Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer one privileged resolution, one non-privileged resolution. I'd like to be heard after the title of the resolutions are read.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold hearings regarding the Music Industry Task Force Report and Recommendations.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the creation of the Philadelphia Fashion and Garment Industry Task Force.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I failed to mention that the resolutions were co-sponsored by Councilmembers Green, Gilmore Richardson, and Heenan. I did have a third privileged resolution that I did not introduce, because the gentleman that I was going to introduce it on behalf of, he is a member of Triumph Baptist Church, where two of our council members, councilmembers Kendra Brooks and Isaiah Thomas are also members, and so we will introduce that jointly next week. But I wanted to just say that I was at his viewing this morning, his funeral's today. He is a combat veteran of the Vietnam War, having served in the First Cavalry Division. His name is James Abram. He goes by the nickname Point Man, because he was a point man, and our veterans here knows what that means. He is a founder of Point Man Soldier Heart Ministry, which has done a lot of work, and I just wanted to recognize him today. And also, I wanted to recognize that in the audience, we're joined by Benjamin Berry, who is a World War II veteran, having served and fought in the Battle of the Bulge, and I'd ask him to stand today. Council President, if I could, just request that we give a moment of silence in memory of James "Point Man" Abram.
Certainly. Please stand, members.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
Thank you, Council President. I also wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the students here from Paul Robeson High, because Paul Robeson High is a wonderful public school in the 3rd District. In particular, I wanted to thank the students who took the time to write to me, Kalise, Sienna, Tekeah, Nashia, Lyric, Jaylon, and Munira. You wrote to me about abortion access, about helping single moms, about your concerns on gun violence, our affordable housing crisis, and raising the minimum wage. And I just want to say that those are really big issues that I'm thinking about and working on as well, but hearing from young people like you gives me the inspiration to keep going. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Our future leaders. Thank you. All right, our next order of business is reports on committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Green for a report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Finance reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Finance, to which is referred Bill Number 200016, entitled an ordinance amending Section 19, 1508 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Refunds and Forgiveness for Poverty Income to revise the tax rate. And Bill Number 200117, entitled an ordinance approving the amendment of the fiscal year 2020 capital budget, providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, subject to certain constraints and conditions, and acknowledging the receipt of the revised forecast of capital budgets for fiscal years 2021 through 2025 as amended. Respectfully reports, it has considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I remove that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day Bill Numbers 200016 and 200117.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended this day to permit first reading of Bills Number 20016 and 20017. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a report from the Committee on Labor and Civil Service.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Labor and Civil Service reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Labor and Civil Service, to which is referred Bill Number 200007, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 20, 1100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Civil Service Preferences, to provide for a civil service preference for qualified graduates of career technical education programs in the school district of Philadelphia, under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports, and has considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 200007.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 200007. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee, and our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with a favorable report have been deemed to have had their first reading. These bills will all be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. Today, there are no additional bills on our first reading calendar, so the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on our final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today, Number 200154.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before we act on the bills and resolutions on our final passage calendar today, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passage calendar today, if you have not already done so, you may sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the chamber. There's a podium, and on that podium, there's a device. When the light turns green on that device, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes. Thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name.
Joe Dennehall, commenting on 200154.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is an official decree of the people, and red man damage quo warranto, as such, requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to government, probably unlawfully. Martin Luther King knew a threat to man, one man's liberty is a threat to all. Martin Luther King gave his all, so that all people would have secure houses, persons, and effects, even the most diverse city council ever. Corruption and oath violating appears even worse than ever. This Cain versus Abel form of brotherly love and sisterly affection steals homes, sends children to dangerous schools, fails to secure... dangerous schools, fails to secure the houses, persons, and effects of the people. This biblical plague of corruption requires prosecution. Laws are like bibles. Unless they are followed, nothing changes. The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of clothes, breach of fiduciary duty. Your office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two USC, Ninety-eight-two, Ninety-eight-three, Ninety-five, Ninety-six, Nineteen-eight-seven, eighteen USC, Two-Forty-one, Two-Forty-two, Twenty-three-eight-one, Twenty-three-eight-four, PA Constitution, Article One, Sections One through Twenty-eight, Twenty-six, PA, CSA, Seven-oh-three, Seven-oh-five, Seven-oh-eight, Seven-oh-nine, Seven-eleven, Seven-twelve, Seven-thirteen, Seven-sixteen, Nine-oh-two, and other laws listed in SCOTUS, Fifteen-eight-nine, Sixty-five, Fourteen-one-three-three-oh, Fourteen-four-oh-five-six, appear violated. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and the legal deed transfer of my home, Ten Thirty-Eight West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given forty-two USC Ninety-eight-two property rights for twenty-six years is egregious, extraordinary, oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just governed must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter governed revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath, constitution, and law be enforced, and jail is required for all who violate oath, constitution, or law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow all of this monumental corruption.
David Pearl, commenting on 200040 and 200006.
Morning. Good morning, still. I made it by three minutes. My name is David Pearl. I am here as a representative from the state of Pennsylvania to the National Legislative Council in Washington, DC for the VFW. I am one of two in the state of Pennsylvania that has this appointment. I answer only to our commander of the VFW, Doc Schmitz, and our VFW Legislative Office in Washington, DC. The VFW has over 1.6 million members, with over seventy-two thousand of them from the state of Pennsylvania. This would mean and translate to close to sixty thousand veterans that are in Philadelphia. We have most of them as members of our VFW. Want to give you some more numbers. In the US, seven point five of the population are veterans. That's one out of every fifteen. In the state of Pennsylvania, ten percent are veterans, one out of every ten. In PA counties all over throughout the state, ten percent are veterans. But in Philadelphia, it's only four percent. That's four out of a hundred are veterans. I've also been told that of the city workers, only one point eight of them are veterans. That's two out of a hundred. And out of the veterans that applied for city jobs, only one point five of them out of a hundred. My mission today comes from, as I said, my boss, the commander of the VFW, Doc Schmidt. It is a simple one, and that is first to support our veterans in any way that is possible. Second is to listen what happens here and to report. And the last is, two weeks, I will be storming the Hill and talking to all our national-level congressmen and senators, and this information will certainly come up, what transcribes here in Philadelphia. So don't think the world's not listening, at least our world. Our mission as legislative council members is to talk with our members, get their input on what they think is important, and to protect the rights of veterans throughout the country. We don't only work for VFW members, we work for all veterans. Lastly, I, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize my World War II comrade. You're the man, buddy. He even took a selfie with me. I want to thank you, everybody, for letting me speak here today, and, um, I'll take whatever happens here and take it down to our commander. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your testimony.
David Henderson. David Henderson.
Next name.
Abdullah Soto, commenting on 200006.
Good morning. Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. Hello, my name's Abdullah Soto III. I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a Hispanic veteran and, uh, veteran, and I'm opposed to extending the extra civil service points to anyone who's not sacrificed for our greater good. My opposition to the change in the charter of the extra points isn't intended out of malice, but rather out of, uh, respect for our brothers and sisters, our fallen brothers and sisters, that is. People like my cousin Detective Lisa Rosado of the NYPD, who ultimately paid for our safety with her life at just fifty-one years old. Excuse me. My cousin Lisa passed away almost a year ago, uh, due to related, due to complications related to, uh, her risk being a first responder on nine eleven. Uh, her family has local roots in the city, much like many of our veterans. They didn't ask for these extra points, but, uh, as a civilized society, I feel that we owe it to them and to them alone. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, we will now move to our calendar. And, Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of 200154?
A resolution approving the agreement of sale of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the South Delaware redevelopment area identified by house number and street address as Ten Wall Street, and authorizing the redevelopment authority to execute the agreement of sale with WW2400, we could go owner number eight, and to take such action as may be necessary to effectuate the agreement of sale.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 200154 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on the Environment and the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities to hold hearings to examine the impact of the sale of the Philadelphia Energy Solutions introduced by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing February as Career and Technical Education Awareness Month in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing the winningest coach in Philadelphia basketball history, William Speedy Morris, on the occasion of his retirement, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Phoebe A. Haddon for her appointment as Chairwoman of the Board of Directors of the Federal Reserve Bank of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Public Safety and Committee on Education to hold hearings to examine the problem of gun violence occurring near Philadelphia schools, and to consider enhancing and establishing video surveillance cameras near schools as school safe corridor zones for students, school personnel, and residents, introduced by Councilman Jones on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Uh, Mr. President, I want to thank you for once again, uh, raising the issue of, along with other members of council, of gun violence, but this is a specific area, the geography of crime, and who it's impacting, which is our young people. Uh, and for you to take a deeper dive in the looking to, not just highlighting the problems, not playing it out on Facebook, but to look at solutions for those problems, which include cameras, boots-on-the-ground police officers, which we will be exploring in the gun violence hearing at one, the use of, uh, Town Watch, the use of SEPTA police, the use of parents that are willing to volunteer, all to create a safe corridor. And I want to applaud you for using those tools, the things that we have available, to make what is necessary to safeguard our children. And so with that, I move for the adoption.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
And a resolution recognizing victim-witness services of South Philadelphia for thirty years of service to victims of violent crime in South Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Chris Kirchner on the occasion of her retirement as Executive Director at the Philadelphia Children's Alliance, introduced by Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring March 1 through 7, 2020, as Women in Construction Week in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Harold T. Epps on the occasion of his departure as Director of Commerce for the City of Philadelphia for his decades of service to greater Philadelphia's business community, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the Police Athletic League of Philadelphia and welcoming the fiftieth annual PAL Day at City Hall, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold hearings regarding the Music Industry Task Force report and recommendations, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our calendar for the day. And are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Any speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, just briefly, I just want to remind, um, members of council and staff, um, that we will be having a lunch briefing with PGW, um, in the caucus room immediately following the council session, uh, to give opportunity for those members of council and others to learn more information about, uh, the workings of PGW. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. There being no additional... Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to, um, acknowledge actually you and the work that you've done earlier this week. I had the opportunity to join you at the dedication for the Edison sixty-four, uh, for the sixty-four people who, uh, attended Edison High School, who essentially, uh, died in the Vietnam War. Not only was it a touching, uh, opportunity for me, it was also a touching opportunity for my, my father, who is, uh, with us in council today, as his brother was one of the sixty-four members of Edison High School who passed away in the Vietnam War. So I wanted to thank you for your leadership. Wanted to also thank all the veterans who are here today, and I did want to...
That I actually inherited from my good friend and colleague, Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez, was actually started when that part of the city was in her councilmatic district. So that gives you a sense of how long these things take place, but thank you for being there, and most importantly, thank your dad. Uh, awesome, awesome, awesome. Okay, um, with that, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, February 27th, 2020, at 10:00 AM.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Council will stand adjourned until Thursday, February 27th, 2020, at 10:00 AM. Thank you all very much.